Evening, ladies and gentlemen. In the interest of punctuality, I would officially call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. A matter of public record and would extend a welcome to those who have taken the time out of your schedule to be present with us. We acknowledge the presence of County Commissioner candidate, Michael Messmore, and Representative, Lewis County Sheriff's Department with us as well. With that, we'll proceed with our roll call. I would invite our deputy clerk, who's filling in in the absence of our city clerk, who's on vacation this week.
Thank you. Kevin Flynn.
Present.
Joe Shai.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Present.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Mark Fennesson.
Present.
And for note, Justin Olson has an excused absence.
Okay, yes. He did inform me that he'd be out of town this week. We'll proceed, as is customary, with a prayer, which this evening will be offered by our City Council Representative, Mayor Pro Tem, Kevin Flynn.
I thought it'd be nice to use somebody who's a little bit more eloquent with words than I am. This was given at a prayer breakfast in 1984 by Ronald Reagan. He started out, "We establish no religion in this country, nor will we ever. We command no worship. We mandate no belief. But we poison our society when we remove its theological underpinnings. We court corruption when we leave it bereft of belief. All are free to believe or not believe. All are free to practice a faith or not. But those who believe must be free to speak of and act on their belief to apply moral teachings to public questions. I submit to you that the tolerant society is open to and encouraging of all religions, and this does not weaken us, it strengthens us. Without God, there is no virtue, because there is no prompting of the conscience. Without God, we're mired in the material, that flat world that tells us only what the senses perceive. Without God, there is a coarsening of the society, and without God, democracy will not and cannot long endure. If we ever forget that we're one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under." So I offer this time tonight, and I ask God to bless our thoughts, to give us the wisdom and knowledge to represent Him and this city, and let it move forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. With that, we'll proceed with our place of allegiance. I would invite all to please rise. Mr. Olson, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed now with the mayor's report. Excited to note that I believe that if we talk fast, we might have an unprecedentedly quick city council meeting.
We're clocking you.
So I'm gonna talk fast. Number one, I wanted to provide the council with an update on the status of the two young men, as you will recall, who have engaged in some improprieties with our historic jail and the Assembly of God church building here in our community. At our last meeting, you were informed that I would be contacting them and their mother to coordinate some service in behalf of the community to make amends for their wrongdoing. And after several efforts, I was successful in contacting the mother, and she had to report that unfortunately, their two sons would not be able to engage in that endeavor because they are moving as of the 1st of August. So the timing and the coordinative logistics of their involvement with the city wouldn't be possible. So unfortunately, that option is no longer available to the community. Second item, didn't make the official agenda. This evening, there's going to be a coordinating council meeting of the entities involved with the National Day of Service. I think I mentioned to the council in our last meeting that we've been tentatively selected as a target of their efforts. I was informed two days ago that it's now official, and that this evening, they're going to be discussing several of the proposed projects that have brought to their attention. I've coordinated this effort with our Public Works employee, Nev. And so they're going to have, after tonight's meeting, will ask to come to the community next week, and I'll be visiting with them to finalize those particulars. But right now, the projects that we're looking at are landscaping, attacking the weeds in all of the side streets of the city of Vator. Knotweed outbreak that we've been trying to contain at McMurphy Park will be targeted, and some landscaping around our three lagoons is a third targeted area. So, and if council members have any others that you can think of, let me know. But that will take place in early September. We're about a month and a half away. I just wanted to, last item on the mayor's report involves the capital facilities amendment. It's still in process, and we're encouraging the attorney involved in that, as well as the, our planner, who are coordinating the effort to complete that, are being encouraged to get it done as quickly as possible, because we can't implement the aspects of our abandoned house ordinance and the abandoned vehicle ordinance in our community until we get those and that document completed, as well as a couple of other important ordinances that we, the council has approved. So we're still pushing for that. I hope that within the next two to three weeks, we'll have a product for you. And that completes the mayor's report. I would launch into our agenda approval that would require council action, and I know there was one member of the council would like to add an item.
I'd like to add one item for a Transportation Improvement Board grant update.
Okay, would that be under unfinished business?
Yes, continuing business.
Okay. So Transportation Improvement Board discussion relating to the grant funding. Do we have a motion from the council?
I'll put a motion together forward that we approve the agenda for July 24th, 2014, with the change noted by Joe Shai for the, what do you call that?
Transportation Improvement Board.
Transportation Improvement Board.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion to approve the agenda with the addition so noted. So do we have a second?
I second the motion to approve the agenda Thursday, July 24th, 2014.
Okay. The motion has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Now we'll proceed with approval of the minutes from our last city council meeting of July 10th. First, you have a chance to review the minutes that have been prepared for you. We await council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for July 10th, 2014.
Okay. Joe Shai has submitted a motion approving those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Fennesson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, next item is the voucher approvals for the month of first half of July and end of July. We even have a total for you.
I'm making a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of July with the corrections, $34,064.46 plus the end of July, $30,321.19 for a total for July 2014 of $64,385.65.
Okay. Mr. Shai submitted a motion to approve the vouchers expanded for the month of July as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, we will entertain public comment. Do we have Mrs. Floyd, any individuals who've signed up?
We have Mr. Michael Messmore.
Okay, proceed.
Good evening, all. My name is Michael Messmore, a local Toledo resident. I live over, or local Lewis County resident. I've lived over in Toledo for 30 years. I'm also a candidate for Lewis County Commissioner, District Three, which of course includes Vator. A little bit about my background. I'm a private sector individual. I have, I own Nicholson Management. It oversees our 11 properties in Lewis County, in various places in Washington State. I've also been heavily involved in electronics manufacturing and sales, development worldwide, a company called Tramex Electronics, Tramex Limited, based in Ireland. I've also been blessed to have a 30-year career in the air transport business. I'm a retired 747 captain for Western and Delta Airlines. Most recently, I changed the A-60 and went back flying again for Coletta Air. It's an all freight company, ad hoc charters. Mostly flying relieved areas like Italy up to the earthquake Haiti, but primarily relief flights into and out of Afghanistan, 747 flights, mostly munitions, Kandahar, a lot of relief supplies, hospital supplies mostly. Unfortunately, sometimes I have to fly human remains back to Dover Air Force Base, very That's just me and a little bit about my background. I'm attending these meetings more to get a flavor of what's, what goes on here. My involvement hasn't been just business in the area. Again, I chose Lewis County 30 years ago because we love it here. We fell in love with this place, decided it's a great place to raise a family. Shortly after we built our house, however, Miracle Tacoma Power decided to open their spill gates one night in 1995, and I almost lost my new home. I undermined it. Immediately after that, within a week, we organized trackos, trucks, equipment. I stabilized my home, my neighbor's home, and people saw what we were doing, and we ended up stabilizing 30 homes up and down the Cowalts River after the flood. Another company I now own, Rio Design Construction. It's pretty much dormant now, pending any more issues with Tacoma Power. I'm also the guy that took on Tacoma Power after that and found, and sued them for negligence, and they were of course found negligent. So I'm the guy that took on Tacoma Power and won. As far as needs in Lewis County go, economic expansion is the only thing that's going to save us here. Economic expansion is of course the tide that floats all boats, rises all boats up, you know, provides revenue to the county, provides more and better paying jobs, you know, provides more deputies for Steve Mansfield. It helps us in all ways possible. Infrastructure, I've been talking to all mayors around town, spent the last two days with Cy Meyer, getting a real flavor for infrastructure, infrastructure needs, and again, economic expansion is our only saving grace here. You know, we can try and get small companies to move in, but overall, economic expansion is my one goal for the county commissioner's office, and we work very hard towards that end. Again, I'm more here to listen and learn your needs, your problems. We're very close to the primary. Most of you probably have already voted. If you haven't, I'd encourage you, you got 12 days left. I've got information, but again, I'm not here to promote myself. I'm here really to learn and listen, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for visiting with us.
Ms. Costello? Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vator. I would first like to say the 4th of July was a smashing hit. Thank you to everyone who participated, and next year will be even better. And then, coming up, we have August the 2nd, Citywide Yard Sale. For those of you who have not called me and gotten on the map, please do so. That way, we can have everybody participating, and the park board will be doing their hot dog fundraiser. On the corner of 506 and A Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure I echo sentiments of the council, and I, as a mayor, thoroughly enjoyed the activities on the 4th of July.
So did I.
Your watermelon feed was also good.
Yes, we learned that there are some prodigious spitters in our community.
Yes.
No, it was, it's definitely creating some buzz, you know. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, let's proceed now with our agenda items. Under the heading of unfinished business, item number one, I need to brief the council, if you haven't already heard officially or otherwise, that we've received a letter of resignation from Nev Peltier, our part-time Public Works employee, who has indicated that he's had to make some difficult decisions, personal decisions, that won't ultimately allow him to continue in his position with the community. But so unfortunately, we've had to accept that letter of resignation. It will be official as of August 1st, although you'll hear in a couple of our subsequent agenda item issues that there's some flexibility with his departure date. I tell you, we have begun to advertise for the position, and as of Wednesday, we're advertising in three different statewide sites, as well as, I think, in the town crier, and hope to begin to get some official applications through that process. But we'll keep you advised. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time. Item number two, relate to wastewater topics. The facility plan update. I kind of referred to that, but that's kind of an adjunct for the capital facilities plan. Most important item of interest, I think, to you involves the meeting that BHC, the engineering company out of Seattle, is scheduled for August 5th at 2:00 PM. We received a letter or email from them, and I would share the contents with the council members. It reads as follows. "We'll be sending you materials next week that you can start looking at in preparation for our August 5th meeting. These materials will include alternative cost information and site layouts, which we will review at the meeting. There's a lot of information on them that we'd like the team to start considering so that we can make the important decision of the preferred alternative on August 5th." So I would encourage your participation at that meeting, if it's at all possible. It's not going to be the official, the meeting where we officially determine which alternative we'll select, but you'll be given the information that they convey to us as soon as we get it. And I'm probably as excited as anybody in our community to see just what they propose for us. So that, for me, represents a significant future event as elected officials in our I wanted to mention item 2B, assigned sewer project application time extension. I think you were, should have been contacted by our city clerk and informed that there was a modification from our previous council meeting. If you will recall, there was some urgency for us to complete the application process for the residents of Vator by today's date, the 24th of July. Subsequent to that council meeting, on the Tuesday following, we had a telephone conference with the individuals involved in that process, and plus a couple of individuals from the State Department of Commerce, who are the ones who hold the money, the grant funding we're spending for this. And we were informed that the July 24th deadline was a self-imposed deadline, and that is, in fact, we don't have to spend that money until the end of 2017. But that doesn't mean that they, we, they want us to do anything differently, other than if, and by the date of that teleconference, we had received 12 completed applications from Vator residents, which was dismal response, because we planned, calculated for about 80. Since then, we're, we've, we're up to about 30 completed applications. But it was suggested that we extend that date for another 30 days. So inasmuch as it's my responsibility to administer the logistics of that activity, I went ahead and made that executive decision to do that. So that's why you were not contacted and invited to call five residents, which I think you agree, you'd be willing to do at our last meeting. So hopefully, you're already aware of that, but now it's a matter of public record. Any questions, concerns?
So just to confirm, the date is August 24th?
Yeah, that would be a date that we could use.
The medicine.
Is it, I think it's 25th.
Yeah, I would go the 25th. Obviously, it's a date that's not written, it's still, but we're going to continue with the protest outreach campaign.
Oh, excuse me, what was that date?
25th, August 25th. And we are going to press ahead with the replacement, oh, not replacement, but the refurbishment of our manhole cover, the drains. There will not be a delay in that. So there'll be more on that in the near future. 2C, wastewater, wastewater treatment plant operator update. At our last meeting, I asked you to confirm the nomination that I submitted to you for Teresa Yost to serve as our official licensed and certified waste treatment sampler and take the tests that Nev Peltier has been performing for us. And so we did officially extend to her offer of employment, and she accepted it. She's begun to serve the city in that capacity. And then, of course, we learned of Nev's resignation, certainly thereafter, and so Nev informed me this afternoon that until we identify a candidate to replace him, he's willing to stay on and assist the city in any need that we might have if he doesn't. It's not his objective to leave the city in the lurch, so to speak, and we are unfortunately in the prime summer season when we have the greatest need for Public Works officials. So I was grateful to hear that. Any questions? That concludes my input on the wastewater topics. If none, we'll proceed with item three, planning committee update. Very pleased to report that our planning committee did meet, and we met officially face-to-face for the first time with Rob White, our new planner, and it was an outstanding meeting. He is as good as advertised, and the planning committee members were excited and involved and learned a lot. So I was very pleased with how it turned out. So that's, they're going to have another meeting. I think it's August 5th, I believe is the next meeting date, but Jill has the official date and time on that. And the council members care to attend, you're certainly free to do so. Next item is item four, which was added by Mr. Shai. It's a council discussion relating to the Transportation Infrastructure Board, or Transportation Improvement Board.
Yes, if you remember, you've approved that we could apply for a grant for a sidewalk in front of Warden Park on the, currently, there's no sidewalk there. In front of you, you have some pictures of what it would look like with the sidewalk and the small retaining mall, since it is on a slope. So that's an idea. If you are okay with that, then we will submit that type of idea to the engineer for a bid, or excuse me, an estimate, and then with that estimate, we can submit the grant application. The deadline for that is August 22nd. So we still have time to make changes, if you guys want to make some changes. But it is a sidewalk grant, not a park grant, so there's only so much landscaping that can go into it. I think the limit is 5% of the total project cost can be landscaping related, so that's not much.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also, you would be requisite for the council to engage in some official actions to approve our pursuit of this.
You want a motion, Chris?
I don't know, you can just say yes, and...
I'll say yes.
Okay. All right. And I detect a consensus, so we'll note for the public record that we will aggressively pursue this funding opportunity.
Great, so we'll get that submitted for an estimate, and we should be able to hopefully have that before, by the time our next council meeting happens, and then you guys can review the final grant before it gets submitted.
Fantastic.
Can I ask you a question?
Would the council, if you could hear a question?
Where are the people on the block? Right now, we're parked on the side of the fair.
There still would be a good amount of space for at least side street parking, so parallel style parking instead of pull-in parking. With, the engineer should probably have the actual measurements, and we'll find out if we'll have enough room to still do pull-in parking over there. So there's a limited amount of space between, you know, between the pavilion and the street. So if we want a sidewalk there, we might, we might lose the ability of doing the pull-in style parking right there. There'll be a curb, so you won't be able to drive on the sidewalk.
Try.
With that, let's proceed to new business items. Item number one was the council to consider a letter of support for a Department of Natural Resources grant. It was brought to our attention several days ago by Judy Costello. She became aware of this Department of Natural Resources grant opportunity, and we provided a copy of that grant to each of you. And Mrs. Costello, would you care to inform the council as to the nature of the grant? Quick overview?
Certainly. It's really pretty simple at this stage. This is basically just an application to meet funding sources. And what these folks do is, they look at our project as what we're looking at, which is two pavilions... is two pavilions, a thirty-five-hundred-foot walkway around the park, and a few garbage cans, which is, would be really nice. But they look at that, and then they contact us, hold our hand, and introduce us then to funding sources, different people who could fund us these items. And it's just basically real simple, we just want to meet the people. There won't be any money come from this, it's just a meet and greet, basically. I tried to provide them everything, all the information about the park, we have four or five partnership letters, which they requested partnership letters. Everyone was really responsive in the community to get on board with that, so, and I think you noticed that I put the city would definitely remember the park board at budget time.
Thank you. So, my understanding is that before we can engage in any sort of grant application process, the city council has to officially endorse it. And there's a deadline, would you care to share with council what the deadline is?
The deadline is August the first, would love to have this in tomorrow's mail.
Yep, that was our intention, to bring it to the council's attention.
Do we need motions, or just approvals?
I'd go with a motion on this.
I'll put forth a motion that we approve the grant application through Judy Costello as quickly as possible.
Okay, you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn to go ahead and approve, with the city's involvement with this. Got a second by Mr. Wilson. Any questions prior to official vote? If there are none, now all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, decisive action, we'll have this ready.
I would say, as a closing of that, to sign the letter.
Yes.
Yes, each member will go and sign the letter.
Okay, before you leave, we'll make sure you get your signature on that.
You're the original mayor.
Well, that's quick.
Thank you very much.
Now, the last item on our agenda for this evening is, involves excavator repair costs. This is an emerging situation. Mr. Pelter indicated that one of his last goals that he'd set for himself in his relationship with the community was to get our excavator repaired. It's been on the fritz, obviously, for almost a year and a half, two years, and we've had several individuals try to fix it, but he successfully disassembled it. If you were to look in our workshop, you'd see the engine parts are, are all out of it, and, and so he's diagnosed the problem, and the problem with our excavator is that the head is cracked. And he contacted a machine shop in Chehalis, who's indicated it cost five hundred dollars to repair that crank and to rebuild the head. And in addition, we'd need to get some components to complete the job, and the only place that has that Korean-made parts is Hamilton Engine in Portland, and we've got a detailed list of what would be necessary, but it would cost about four hundred dollars. And then, there'd still need to be oil, coolant, and sealant purchased as well. So Nev indicates the total repair, and he's willing, if we engage in this, he's willing to reassemble it, and it's confident it will work when it's done. And it would cost about a thousand dollars, and he would complete it as one of the last tasks he does for the city of Vader. The challenge with this is that the machine shop in Chehalis is busy, and they're not going to be able to get to it quickly, it might be three weeks. And Mr. Pelter would be gone before then, but that's why I mentioned that he said he'd be willing to come back. We'd have to pay him, of course, but at his current rate, but he'd be willing to come back and perform that service for us. So, all of this might take a month or so. What I would like is the council to give tentative approval to locate the funds to complete that repair, because that machine is probably worth, if it were functional, at least ten thousand dollars, I would think. And so, I have not spoken to Mrs. Nielsen, our city clerk, about this, because we just learned of it yesterday, and she's gone for the week. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm extremely confident we've got the funds available for it. But I would like the council, if we could demonstrate that we can then locate the funding, if we have your contingent approval to that end, we would set it into motion. Yes, Mr. Flynn?
Well, owning the equipment like that, for that amount of money, is pretty reasonable for replacement costs if we ever needed one. And basically, if we had the right employee that could operate it, when it comes down to it, could operate it properly, then I would even make a motion that we go through twelve hundred dollars for repairs, and let it sit there until we can find an operator that is qualified. Period.
Well, cut right to the chase, and I did hear a motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to approve this project, contingent upon locating the money to pay for it.
Right.
Which I have here is one thousand dollars. So, did that capture the essence of your motion? Okay, heard that motion. We have a second, okay, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Do you have additional commentary, concerns?
When you bring it up for a vote, keep, everybody should keep in mind that if we decide we don't want that excavator, we can't get anything for it the way it sits. But if it's fixed, it is a viable asset that we could sell.
Yes, good point.
So to have it sitting around like it is, is foolish.
It's junk.
Yeah, it is, scrap metal.
Right.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, gentlemen, we've completed our agenda and set a new record for Mayor Smith's and we do have a comment from the public, would the council care to extend the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make this real brief, I'm concerned about the juveniles who vandalized the park, the church, and desecrated the American bike. Since their mothers says they're not going to have the opportunity to do the volunteer work that they agreed to, are they going to have the opportunity to sit in jail for a while instead, in lieu of, because that's what they agreed to volunteer instead of sit in jail? So I hope they're not going to be deprived of that opportunity too.
I would, inasmuch as that is not applicable to the agenda which we were addressing, and is more appropriate for the public comment, if the council's not opposed to it, I would like to address that after the meeting, I can give you specifics on that.
That's fine.
And I could address it for the council members as well, if you'd like me to.